Call order, tonight's Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting, Thursday, September 26, 2024. We can all stand and pay respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the good soul of liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. We can note the roll.
Noted. There is a quorum. Mr. Vlosik and Mr. Ballard are excused.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to number four, approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We approve tonight's agenda dated September 26, 2024 at 7:00.
I'll support it.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Number five, conflict of interest, ex parte contact. Does anybody have anything for this evening? Seeing none. Number six, approval of the minutes, Planning Commission Regular Meeting, 9/12/2024.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the regular planning commission meeting minutes dated 09/12/2024.
I'll support it.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing or on this agenda. Seeing nothing, we will move on to number eight, commissioners' comments. Does anybody have comments for this evening? Everybody's quiet. Okay. Number nine, public hearing. Purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comments regarding, A, zoning ordinance text amendment to update Article II with definitions relating to electric vehicle charging stations, and the addition of Section 8.3 to remove barriers to the use of electric vehicles and establish a safe, convenient, cost-effective electric vehicle infrastructure to support the use of electric vehicles.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to open up the public hearing, if I may.
Excuse me. You have to have the presentation by the petitioner, which in this case is the township, so Mr. Pasalaco will present the petition, and then you have the public hearing.
Correct. Well, tell him to get to it.
Wow.
Got somewhere to be.
Mr. Nold. Good evening, Commissioners. Mateo Pasalaco, Carlisle Wharton Associates, we're the planning consultants for the township. Yeah, so this evening, we have two text amendment considerations for the planning commission that have gone through the ORC process and are here this evening. The first being is, my apologies, let me grab my memo. Text amendments as it relates to electrical vehicle charging stations. So, the purpose of this language is really just to add definitions, clarifications, and requirements for the installation of electrical vehicle charging stations on properties. It does cover all zones, residential, commercial, industrial, so on and so forth, and applies somewhat reasonable but different standards to both. Deals with some of the technicalities associated with electric vehicle charging. It stipulates the use of those spaces as well as the fact that those spaces are to be used for charging purposes and not necessarily to, for any just general parking purposes. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission has about the language.
In my mind, when I read, a lot of this was definitions.
Correct.
A lot of it just is clarification as to what is definitely defined and what it means for which one we're talking.
Just for point of order, you're done with your presentation, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so what we're gonna need to do next is open up the public hearing and then move through the steps accordingly. Then we'll discuss.
Now, can I open the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We open the public hearing at 7:04.
Support. We have a motion. We have a second to open public hearing. 7:04. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Public hearing is now open. This is the point where we would take public, anybody wishing to speak on behalf of this? It does not look like we have anybody, so I probably don't need to go through the rules.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
Is it appropriate to close the public hearing now?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion. We close the public hearing at 7:05.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we can take comments from the township consultants and staff.
Everything in the presentation was pretty much what I had. I did want to add, though, that it also offers the ability for businesses to install the infrastructure of a charging station without actually installing the station itself. It's a bit of a preemptive allowance.
So, with that comment, then, a person that has a business and wants to add a couple spaces for EV vehicles, they can do that without coming back with any kind of amendment to a site plan, correct?
I think that that would be reviewed as, considered it a minor amendment, so administratively it could be approved.
Okay, so that would be then on your behalf?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I care about.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
I would like to add that one of the things that the ORC took interest in is to make sure the types of vehicles that could be parked in those EV charging stations. And we have covered that very well, that it needs to be electric vehicle, includes a battery electric vehicle or a plug-in hybrid to be occupied in those spots.
And that's not something that the township would be policing the...
That's correct.
Any other discussions? I know we talked about it quite a bit in the ORC meetings. Other discussions or concerns or topics? Okay, with that, we will entertain a motion for the First Amendment?
Mr. Chair, I'd say I'd like to entertain a motion that we approve this to move on to the, I believe it goes to the township board from here?
Correct.
As a recommendation from the planning commission.
So, we have a motion to approve and support it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the recommendation approves. So, now we can move on to B, zoning ordinance text amendment to update Article 18 by clarifying the process for which zoning ordinance text amendments and zoning map amendments are reviewed by the township and add Sections 18.6 and 18.7 to establish criteria for which zoning ordinance text amendments and zoning map amendments are considered by the township board and planning commission. With that...
And my apologies, the cover memo for this, I noticed the error copied over the electric vehicle, so it was not a, it's not the same language. It's definitely different. So, the purpose of these edits is really to add a lot more substance to the process and the criteria to which the township considers either zoning text amendment or map amendment changes. There was, the section existed prior, but really didn't offer a lot of guidance, and I think where that ended up putting the planning commission every single time was, well, what does the future land use map say, and then you kind of go from there. Now, you have other criteria in place that allows you to kind of go through and really assess, are these rezonings appropriate, either initiated by the town, you know, however in which they may come to the township or be initiated by the township. It offers a lot more guidance than that, and it also offers a lot more process and steps that need to be gone through in order for it to reach that consideration.
Thank you very much. Number two, we can open up the public hearing.
Mr. Chair? Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We open up public hearing, cover the text amendments at 7:09.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Seeing nobody from the public, we could probably close the public hearing as well.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing at 7:10.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so now we can open it up to comments from the township consultants and staff and discussion. Any questions? Again, I know the ORC went through this quite extensively.
I think it's very well done, because I believe, in my opinion, that we have a need for this type of a situation to occur in the township when someone presents it to us. If they can meet the criteria that's listed, when you look at 18.7 within the zoning text itself, and then for different reasons why people want to come to us for what their needs are, it gives them a way to do it, and if it's a conditional type rezoning, what I like about it is that if that property doesn't get, I guess I want to say, built in accordance with what was approved by the planning commission and also the township board, then it goes away, and it goes back to its, the condition of what the original zoning was on that piece of property. So, I think it's a great ordinance. I'm for it 110%.
Any other questions or... Now, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend this to the township board for their approval, the text amendment changes, Article 18.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So, moving on to number 10, unfinished business. We don't have any. So, we will move to number 11, new business, PC 24-003, Baron Industries Addition Preliminary Site Plan, proposed addition to existing building at 3020 Adventure Lane, Oxford, Michigan, parcel 0404376006. The proposed addition is approximately 17,600 square foot modification of the parking lot is also proposed. Oh, I'm sorry. Modification of the parking lot is also proposed. The applicant is Tom Seawick, President H&amp;S United Construction, 12555 North Saginaw, Clough, Michigan, 48420. With that, we will open it up for the petitioner to present or discuss with the board.
So, yeah, it's, Baron Industries is looking to build a 17,600 square foot...
Would you please introduce yourself first?
I'm Tom Seawick, President.
Thank you, just for the record.
I'm Greg Baron.
Can you hear them?
I'm Greg Baron, Vice President Baron Industries, representing.
Thank you.
So, yeah, it's a 17,600 square foot pre-engineered metal building that they want to build for their manufacturing. So, we're encroaching on two areas of the 50-foot setback. So, we're looking for a variance to be able to build the building for the size that they're looking at.
So, what we'll be doing is expanding our machining, specifically our machining operations there. We currently on Plexus Drive have about 45,000 square feet that we use for precision casting and machining, CNC machining operations, and we have the need to expand, and we currently own that 10,000 square foot building. Unfortunately, it was kind of put in the middle of the property, so we're originally saying we want about 20,000 square feet to fit other equipment in there, and then with the building where it is and the type of building it is, so we pared it down to the 17,600. It still does encroach, but you can't move anymore to the north or to the south. We wouldn't, you know, we'd be encroaching in the driveway and the septic field and everything. So, we, because we, it's a private road, there's no residential around there too, I believe that kind of mitigates the impact to any other interested parties. We also, we did a complete layout of the inside of the facility along with the Michigan Manufacturing Technology Center. We used assistance for, with a lean manufacturing black belt to come up with the best, most efficient layout, and what it, it kind of shows that if we were to move the building back in order to not encroach at all, it would take out about a third of the equipment here and two-thirds of our additive manufacturing room that we planned on, and it wouldn't really make it economically, economic sense to proceed with it. So, thus, we're requesting the variance.
Is that everything? Okay, thank you very much. So, yeah, we can go on with the consultants.
If I project enough, can you hear me over there?
Yeah.
Okay. What? So, sorry, I cannot be leaning into this thing all night long. All right, so, as you have been presented, yes, they have, there's a building there now that's about 9,000 square feet. It is vacant. The area is pretty much in the middle of the industrial district up by Oakwood and M24, so they're, all of their neighbors are industrial. They're looking to propose the 17 and a half thousand square foot addition, and so kind of make sure I get all of my notes here, but it is zoned light industrial. Its future land use is light industrial, and as they had stated, they do need two variances, and they're also requesting a landscaping waiver from the planning commission. The waiver can be dealt with tonight. The variance would be dealt with in a manner that if you do support the plan as presented, one of the conditions would be that they go to the ZBA, and the ZBA grants the variances. The site itself is about a little over four acres. Again, so they're on Oakwood and Adventure Lane, meaning they have two front yards, and we'll kind of get to it, but per that designation, the 50-foot setback kind of starts to cut into some areas that they're trying to develop. So, just to add specifics to it, the building setback variance is for, to go from the 50-foot required to the 28-feet that they are proposing. As it go, as it relates to the site access and circulation, I think the biggest thing to consider with this is that, I mean, the site access itself off Adventure Lane staying the same, but the site is being improved to accommodate 53-foot trucks, correct? And so, one of the things that we've noted is that, A, whether or not the applicant has talked to RCOC about Oakwood, because that intersection may or may not have that kind of traffic currently, and the intersection stops being concrete halfway through at Adventure Drive. So, we have requested that there may be some consideration and conversation with RCOC regarding that, the current layout of the intersection and the materials being used as well, if there's any concerns with that. The other item that we had noted is that because these trucks will be crossing through a drive aisle that separates parking, that maybe there's a consideration for crosswalks. I know they had indicated that the truck traffic is not expected to be...
Yeah, it would be really heavy because the material, the casks would be coming over from the main plant.
Can you hear this, or?
It's still going over. Okay, sorry. Yeah, just to expand on the comment of why we don't expect heavy truck traffic, because the casks, the machining would be coming over from the main existing plant on Plexus Drive, and then we would just be driving over there, you know, maybe, well, we, you have a small truck, a box truck that we would use daily, once in the morning, once in the evening, and then maybe two, three times a week, you'd have an outside truck that would come in to ship product out of the plant, so.
So, the crosswalk is, is a take or leave to the planning commission's desire. There's not a requirement for it, but we did add it into an observation for our report. I know that credit to Sharp Engineering, they had noted that the safety path needs to be extended on the other side of Adventure Lane. Maybe, that's the only thing you came here to talk about tonight, Jim, I'm sorry. I just covered in for you.
Stole my thunder.
Yeah, sorry about that, but credit to Jim. From a parking perspective, numerically, they meet the requirements, but this is where the other variance falls into play. Parking, front yard parking is not allowed within the setback. Setback requirement's 50 feet. So, on the plan, they have shown where the variance that they are requesting is that there'd be a 38-foot setback for parking as opposed to the required 50. We did note that there, there's still a small section of area where curving needs to be added to the plan. Nothing to hold up preliminary site plan considerations for. There were some conversations with the fire department about onsite water storage and dedicated wells. The fire department has reviewed this plan and approved it, so we're all covered there. From a landscaping perspective, the heavy lift for landscaping comes at final, but when we were reviewing the plan, we saw areas that they were designating for the green belt and buffer requirements. They overlapped some of the detention areas, the new detention areas that they're proposing. One, that's not, I mean, by no fault of them, that's not the best practice, not because we don't want things growing in detention ponds. They need to be open and able to retain the water and so on and so forth, which can start to complicate that. But then we also looked at this and said, the geography is really constraining them. The planning commission has the ability to offer waivers, and given that their surrounding is industrial uses, there's no residential or anything of that sort, they were advised to at least review and consider seeking the waiver for the south and west required green belts and buffers, to which they have requested that, they have requested that waiver. And just for consideration down the road, because we will, we will get to that point. We did provide an aerial in the report of the, of the existing landscaping on the site. We can get to my review here. So, just for when we're back, you know, assuming that we get back to final site plan, there's a lot of natural vegetation along the western, or I'm sorry, the eastern property line. And to the north, there's some existing vegetation, which I believe they've indicated that would be mostly retained. We're still gonna need counts to make sure that they meet the numbers, but those areas, and to the north, that's a storage unit. So, again, just to kind of put it on your radar, most landscaping stuff is dealt with at final. Tonight, they were seeking the waiver so they can, you know, create their final plans. The only other thing that we had kind of noted in our review is that, is that as they had said, it's kind of a prefab building. It would be a visual contrast to the existing building that is there now. I'm not saying it wouldn't be complimentary or things of that nature, and there's nothing in the ordinance necessary to require something other than that, but just to provide the planning commission some context, the buildings, it will be a contrast between new and old. Other than that, though, we haven't cited any major issues with it. Really, the big ones are considering the variances and landscape waivers. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. Jim Sharp, Sharp Engineering. I only came here to talk about the safety path, so it's gonna be quick, but now I'm gonna drag it out and bore you with a few more things. So, no. You should have our, our letter that was dated September 16th, along with a redline set of drawings. Again, I'll just kind of go through my comments very briefly. With regards to the site grading, again, these are things that can be cleaned up during the engineering phase. It was a little challenging to read, I'll just say that. There's a lot going on, so hopefully they'll be able to clean that up. But we're able to make heads or tails of it, and it appears that all the grading is going to meet the ordinance requirements. The safety path that was on Oakwood Road, some of it seemed to exceed the ADA requirements, so again, they can pick that up during the final engineering phase. With regards to sanitary sewer, there is no sewer out here. It is a septic system. However, we would like confirmation from Oakland County Health Division that they either have no objection to it or that there's improvements that need to be made. Similar to the water system, there is no water main out here, but again, confirmation from the Oakland County Health Division that the exist, that there's gonna be a new well, I believe, correct? A new well, so they'll need a permit for that, and also for the abandonment of the existing well that is onsite. So, we will be looking for that. With regards to the stormwater, as Mateo briefly mentioned, they are proposing like three different ponds out there, and everything seems to drain properly to swales and to the, to the new retention ponds. There's also a retention pond on the west side of the property, west of Adventure Lane. At the pre-application meeting, we actually had talked about the possibility of maybe relocating Adventure Lane, but it's a private road, so then you gotta get other people involved, and that would again be another potential reason for a variance request to be approved, because that would be, you know, quite a, quite a big undertaking to relocate that roadway out there. See, with regards to the pavement sidewalks, all the, all the sections, they seem to meet all the, they meet all of the requirements, are proposing some curving out there. Some of it's gonna sheet drain into natural drainage swales with some parking blocks on there, which I believe is acceptable via the ordinance. The eight-foot wide pathway, again, we keep iterating that. It is a requirement that they put this safety path across the property, or at least show it on the site plan, so they need to extend it to their property line over on the west side. And, you know, that was really, that was about it. So, most of our stuff, we're pretty comfortable with, and that they can finish it up during their permitting and engineering phase. Any questions? Be happy to answer them.
Just one quick one. So, the detention basin that's west of Adventure Lane, is that used by multiple people, or just, how does that work out? That's, that's on the opposite side of the street of where almost everything else is, so is that used by other additional owners or businesses up there?
I don't believe so. I believe that that's just for that particular property. Maybe it was designed that for, for this property and for portions of the roadway, but I believe everything is flowing kind of to the...
And then, does that detention basin on the west side have an outlet then?
I believe, I believe it's an overland swale that goes along the ditch on the west side and continues northerly.
Towards 24?
Goes northerly, sorry.
Oh, northerly.
Northerly.
So, then that has, so if, if water goes into that basin, then it would then head north?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause that confused me.
But they're adding additional basins on their property, so it's gonna kind of be restricted before it gets into that basin, so I don't believe that they're adding any additional, additional flow, I guess we would say.
Most of the drawings I had were, it was hard for me to read some of the topo on there, so I was, are those slopes then on those basins in accordance with what we would typically have within our township?
Yes, we are.
Okay, I couldn't pick that up. So, I know they got the one on the south. They're gonna make that modification to that, and then the one that's right in front of the new addition, they would make modifications to that and push it closer to Adventure Lane.
There's one right along the building as well.
Right.
Yeah. So, it kind of ties together.
So, they use all those in combination to make over?
Correct.
Okay, then that answers my question.
What is the, the tank drawing? What is that for?
Excuse me?
The tank drawing, page 43 in our packet, what?
It's for the... Just for the fire department?
Fire department.
Okay.
So, the fire department is requiring a, I forget how many gallons, it's pretty big.
It's, it's, yeah, it's, I cannot remember the gallons right now.
It's 30,000?
36,000, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it'd be in ground?
Perfect.
Yeah, because again, no water main, no fire hydrants up there, so that's what they have to do.
Is that all one tank?
Yes.
What's the, what's the material of that tank?
Well, we don't, we've got a couple of different options. We haven't finalized one yet.
Hopefully something that doesn't leak.
It is.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I don't want to be funny.
I can, uh...
It's for water.
Well, this one's calling for fiberglass, at least according to the drawing.
It might have been, I...
Last one, let that...
Well, I was thinking that, I mean, I'm just familiar with some situations where this has been done in the past in other communities, and we had difficulty with steel. It wasn't impervious to rust, so what happened was eventually they, they leaked, because the water just sits there. It's never drawn out unless there's an emergency. So, it's continuously just sitting there stagnant. So, I was just kind of wondering what kind of tank it was to manage the water.
We have one in the township that was concrete.
We have one in the township that was concrete, and same thing, it cracked.
Oh, yeah.
So the water...
We looked at that, that it's...
So fiberglass or something would be...
I think fiberglass lasts a long time.
Correct.
I'm fairly confident it is, but...
That's what the drawing's calling for here, is fiberglass.
Yeah. I'm trying to find the spec.
Just wanted to ask the question for the record.
Both within the steel tank?
Yeah.
Because basically it kind of relates down to a code question later, when they do the addition.
Okay. Any last questions, or?
Well, I just, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to mention that I'm in favor of the landscape waiver from the planning commission, and I'm also in favor of preliminary site plan approval from the planning commission side.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have some questions for the petitioner. How many new jobs do you think this is going to create?
So the, the plan is for fifteen new jobs.
Fifteen, one five or five zero?
Five years.
Great.
Five years.
Okay.
Rampage up. There'd be machining, machinist jobs, inspectors will have some non-destructive testing inspection, dimensional inspections, we'll have corner measuring machine operators, additive manufacturing, we'd need maintenance, and then like shipping and receiving personnel, so.
And my other question's more related to process, because you made a comment earlier that you're going to have probably a daily truck that goes back and forth between two locations, I have to go over Oakwood back and forth. How big are your castings that you're going to be moving on that truck?
They're generally under seventy-five pounds. Most of them are between five and twenty-five pounds.
All right. The reason I'm asking this question, because I, during my day job, I do dabble in the manufacturing arena.
Okay.
And I've seen on some instances with situations like this, where instead of using the truck, in some cases, they use a forklift.
Oh.
And I don't think we have any ordinances or anything that would stop you from doing that, but I don't think that is the best course of action for you and/or that area to have a forklift going back and forth.
Right. No, it's not good for the forklifts and...
No, but I've seen it done.
Okay. The plan too, I mean, this is going to be a clean area, so we'd have, we'd have like a white tire forklift that operates inside the building. And then the other existing building, we do have one that has, say like outside, big tires on it, but it is not to track any dirt or anything inside the plant to keep it clean.
So I'm glad to hear you have that clean forklift that'll limit what you can do for driving back and forth, so that's good. Okay. And you mentioned that the long, what, fifty-three-foot truck, you know, you get one or two shipments per week out of that location, most likely?
Correct. Yeah, it's just based on what we do now out of, you know, machining and how much output there is in the machine shop, it's, it's, that's basically what we do.
Okay, perfect.
We multiple every day in and out. I mean, there's a lot more trucks going to, you know, Oxford Ford, American axle, and state crushing in and out every day, and all those guys.
I understand. And my, my final question has to more do with, let's say, landscaping in the parking lot. I know you're looking for a landscaping waiver, and it was earlier mentioned that you're going to save all those trees or most of those trees, but looking at the parking lot layout, it goes right into that, my trees on the east side there.
So what, type of the engineering, that we could put bushes along the side of the building, or something not, big trees?
I guess my, my general question is, is because we've had these discussions with some residential developments, that they're going to save some trees, and then come to find out that they clearcut everything and then come back and plant some trees, you know, which are never of the age or vintage of the ones that are already there, because they're like in their forty years, and they're well, well-grown trees, versus you're putting a little sapling out there. So my question really is, are you guys going to clearcut all those trees to put in this parking lot, or are you going to leave those and, and work within them?
So on the left, like between, to the right of Adventure Lane and the north of Oakwood, you can see kind of lighter colored cluster of trees there. According to the plan, those stay. And then, but to the right of that, the ones right along Oakwood up until right about the end of the existing building on the right, those would have to come out, it looks like. So we're here, to here, these are all coming out, basically. Right, but not, yeah, and then all the ones, east and north, would stay, yeah, except that one on the north that kind of juts down, but...
And then the parking lot goes all the way around up here, and then you have the back, you have the T or whatever it's called.
Yeah, it's more of a driveline that's going in right there, so the, the, when the bigger trucks do come in, they, they've got to have that lane to turn.
Right.
So you, we'll, we're going to minimize as much as we have, can to keep, you know, because that, that, that driveline goes pretty tight to the building area.
And it's like twenty-five feet wide. Yeah, so most of that will be retaining wall, but save most of those trees.
The northeast corner, you've got a little bit of a turn, that, so they can come in and then back, so there'll be a little bit of cutout in there, but yeah, so the, the plan is to retain as much as possible.
That's what I wanted to hear you say on the record, so.
Yeah.
You're going to retain as many of those trees as you can, and you're not going to clearcut.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask or have you consider in your parking arrangements having enough room so that a second semi, if two of them were there at once, could pull off? Today, I drive that area quite frequently, and one of your neighbors, further down Oakwood, has a tendency, because of where their dock and unloading is, they may have as, as many as three semis lined up along Oakwood Road on the gravel, that you've got to maneuver around to get on. And I'd hate to see you do the same thing.
Right. So are you talking on Adventure Lane, though? Because the...
Yeah, if you could do something on Adventure Lane, or within your parking lot areas, so that if a second truck come, there was a spot you could pull it off.
So there's two loading docks that, that'll be in on the far north end.
Pull up the, yeah, the site plan.
Okay, so, so you could unload two, or load two trucks at one time?
Yeah, we could, so they could pull in, and then one would be in one dock, and the other could come in the other dock, and there are two. I understand, I understand, because I see it too, they're just sitting on the road waiting for the other truck to pull out.
Right.
Yeah. I never, yeah, I didn't think of that, because it's not something that happens now, but I see what you're saying. Yeah, we have two, two docks.
Well, it might, it might be something that you keep in mind in your management, when two trucks pull up, say, you go to this dock, you go to the other one.
Yeah.
Because we want you off of Adventure Lane.
Yeah, stay off the main road, pull in and, and wait either, yeah, well, we have a space where they can wait, so we could, we could manage it that way.
Right there, so there's, you can see, there's two areas for two, two trucks to be...
Okay.
Because there's no turnaround or anything at the end of Adventure.
Oh, no, they got to come back out.
Right, yeah, so they can pull here, and then the other one here, so you have one, two, and then all this area to back up and pull back out. But yeah, you don't want them like sitting, sitting here like they do on Oakwood over there. Yeah. Understood.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. That's all I had.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, if it's okay with the planning commissioners. I'd like to make two motions tonight. One motion is going to be in regards to landscape waiver, and the second motion will be in regards to preliminary site plan. Motion number one, I move to approve a waiver from the township zoning ordinance landscaping buffer and greenbelt requirements along the south and west property lines as permitted under section seven point eight of the zoning ordinance, given the unique feature of the site such as limited geographic and adjacent industrial uses, which create conditions where strict application of the landscape regulations would result in a less efficient screen than any, than any alternative landscape design. The planning commission finds that the proposed modification complies with the intent of the ordinance and strict adherence would not result in a more effective or beneficial design in this particular context.
I'll support.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion or concerns? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Turner?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Spiz?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Okay, so that motion carries?
Thank you, Commissioners. And motion number two, I move to approve preliminary site plan approval for PC file number PC two-four dash zero-zero-three, known by the project name Baron Industry. Expansion condition upon the following. One, approval of the required variances by the Oxford Township Zoning Board of Appeals. Two, applicant providing the information required by the zoning, excuse me, two, applicant providing the information required by the township zoning ordinance set forth in the reports submitted by the township consultants, the fire department, and the township administration. And three, the applicant's submission of a revised plan addressing the deficiencies noted in the report from the township consultants, township fire department, and township administration.
Support.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Any last discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Berger?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Spiz?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to number twelve, communication, any committee reports? Economic Development Committee?
Have them report, we have them.
Okay. The Ordinance Review Committee?
Yes, tonight, there's two ordinances that were, work that was completed by the ORC. We are still working on some others. The other thing that we will be doing over the next month and a half or so is collecting any known projects that we should put on our list to take forward for next year. So if you have something like that, if you'd send me an email to one of the committee members, so that we can discuss it at our monthly meeting.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Planner, engineer reports?
Questions? You have, should have my report in your packet? Any questions?
No?
Thank you for being here tonight.
The sidewalk talk was...
Outstanding.
You know what? I don't think it was.
I didn't have it.
Yeah, so...
No, we didn't get your, it didn't make it to the packet.
Maybe we could have Cheryl email it to the Commissioners?
I'd be okay with that.
Wonderful report.
That's why I'm so good.
Concise to the point.
There's a priority now.
Okay, with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at seven forty-four. We're here until you...
All in favor?
All right.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thought we were going to keep Jim another half hour.